Well, close enough for government work. So I'm going to call a regular session of the Oregon City Commission to order for Wednesday, October 21st, 2015. There will be an executive session immediately follow the regular meeting pursuant to ORS 192.6602H to consult with legal counsel concerning legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Katie, want to call the roll, please?
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Here.
Mayor Holliday?
Here. If you'd stand and join me in flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so Chief Mann.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I want to start by welcoming Wendy Libkey and her father, Tom Spires, who are in the audience here. This presentation is, we're basically presenting to the community and putting on record that their Highway 26 is being named by the state, the Robert Memorial.
Robert Libkey.
Robert, excuse me, Robert Libkey Fall and Officer Memorial Highway. This location was chosen by Wendy and specifically because this is where Rob liked to go hunt and wanted to have a highway that was, that was, had something to do with how Robert lived and not necessarily how he died. So before, I am going to bring up, Mary, do you want to come up and sit up front? I'll introduce Mary Nunenkamp here. She is the Chair of the Oregon Law Enforcement Memorial Trust Fund, and in 2009 she created the Public Safety Officer License Plate Program, and she's going to talk about that really quick and about the signs here. And she is also, I'll say that she was amazing in her support of our department and the city during the Libkey event in her work for the Oregon Fallen Badge Foundation and just who she is as a person. So Mary, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. I am Mary Nunenkamp, and I've been asked by the chief just to say a few words, and Mayor, I will honor my two minutes. Thank you for the reminder. Not only do I wear the hat as the Chair of the Oregon Law Enforcement Memorial Trust, I am retired from the Washington County Sheriff's Office, and I'm also a member of the Clackamas County Peace Officers Benevolent Foundation. And my husband was a detective who was killed off duty nine and a half years ago, and I was and still am humbled at the amount of support that I received. And when Jim asked me to talk about sort of the origin of these signs, I cannot stress to you enough how critical your support of the Oregon City Police Department and Wendy Libkey and her family is in our recovery. And I have to tell you, I have the honor of traveling around the state supporting survivors. And Oregon City has been phenomenal. You have embraced your department, and from a person who spent 40 years in the line of work, we can't thank you enough for that. The highway sign that you see behind me was brought into the 2011 session, and the goal of that sign is to commemorate police officers killed in line of duty. This last session, they've added military personnel to that program as well. The sign that you see here for Robert is our way of saying to Wendy and her family that we will never forget. As a law enforcement officer, we take that commitment to our survivors incredibly seriously, and the fact that you honor that as well means a lot to us. Robert's sign will be the 15th sign in the state of Oregon. We have four more ready to go up in the next couple of months. No taxpayer dollars can be used for these signs. That's where the license plate comes in, and you all have pins in front of you. My son and I went down to Salem and got that law passed after the Woodburn bombing, and we discovered that Woodburn community folks were having garage sales to support families, and we said, "That's not sustainable." So with this license plate then on the back of your cards, and everybody in the audience, please feel free, there's some in the back to grab one, we are able to, with the generous folks of Oregon, we are able to give a lot of money to help a lot of people recover. The plate was available in 2010. We've got 3,365 sold as of October 1. I can't stress enough to you, Mayor, and to all of you, how much your support to all of us in law enforcement means to us, and I appreciate very much the time to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. So, a couple odds and ends. One, the sign is going to be, if most people remember back when this happened, there were some photos of Robert down at the Halloween event downtown, and it's been important for Wendy and for us to remember Rob as he lived, not as he died, and he was very involved in his community with kids, and that Halloween event was a pretty big deal. And so last year, and then we're going to do it again this year, we'll keep doing it, we're going to have a pretty good presence down there, we're going to have this sign down there, so anybody who wants to come by and see it, take a picture, whatever, they're going to be able to do that. On Highway 26, the sign's going to be located almost, it's actually almost all the way out to the coast by Lower Nahalum Road, and that literally is right where he used to go camp and he used to hunt. I just want to echo a little bit what Mary said about not forgetting, you know, that the community has, like anybody does, you're going to move on, and there's a lot of things that are going on in people's lives, and so they move on, and when they hear Robert Libkey's name, they remember that time. Wendy is, goes to bed every night without Rob, wakes up every morning without Rob. If, if, if I were Rob, I would want to be remembered, and I think that the mission for us, and the important thing for Wendy, is it does not fix anything, but it makes it better if nobody ever forgets the sacrifice that he made, and I think that it is on us as a city and us as a department to keep honoring him every year and at other times, too. So Wendy, thank you for being here, Tom, too, and I'm assuming you don't want to say anything. That's all I have.
So I just wanted to add, you know, I think a lot of people didn't realize that Rob was a volunteer reserve. So this is not one of our, you know, paid guys who signed up and get paid and do all that, but to give his life for our city as a volunteer, just, it just shows, I'm going to talk about a proclamation right after this about going the extra mile, while Rob certainly went the extra mile for us, so we want to remember him. Anybody else?
No, just thanks for being here, Wendy, and we're still with you.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, one of the things that makes Oregon City so special is our volunteerism, and Rob is the example of just giving selflessly and his vitality and his commitment to the whole community, and he will never be forgotten and the whole family. And we love our volunteers, and just thank you.
What I have next is a proclamation declaring November 1st, 2015 as Extra Mile Day, as is typical of me. We're not going to read the proclamation, but it will be posted on the city's website. And then we are now up to citizen comments. So I got to go back to the floor here. Do we have anybody? Oh, we do. Okay. So, Mr. Hunt and Commissioner Mum.
How are you, Kevin?
Ms. Hunt?
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the commission. I would like to make just a few brief comments.
Name for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin Hunt, I live in Oregon City. This is in regard to your vote last meeting concerning the termination of the services of City Manager David Frazier. I took the opportunity to review the, both videotape and the minutes of the meeting in the year 2013 when there was citizen comment and there was a vote to ratify the proposed contract for Mr. Frazier, including a very controversial multi-hundred thousand dollar severance clause. Now, at that time, there were three of us from the community who testified about our grave concerns that that contract was going to possibly bind future commissions and that it would span several election cycles. At that time, the city attorney's functions were being shared by Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Kabaisman, and at no time did Mr. Sullivan, who was present, respond to any of the citizens by indicating that you had an obligation to re-ratify that contract after future elections. And so now, at the last meeting, it was announced that you've decided not to honor the severance clause on the grounds that you failed to re-ratify it. I find a little curious, and I think it's going to be hard for some people to accept as I do, that the city can rely upon its own non-feasence to evade a contractual obligation. But what concerns me even more than that is the fact that if, in fact, in ensuing litigation, which I presume will happen, if, in fact, you're going to be compensating your current city attorney to represent the city in defense of that lawsuit, it would seem to me that he stands to profit from what some people might view as his own malpractice, which I think is extremely unseemly, and I would ask that you get some ethical advice from an independent attorney in that regard. The only other remarks I'd like to make was in your last meeting, you assured the public you had made no decisions in executive session. However, it was after your vote to terminate the services of Mr. Frazier that it was announced that you, that the mayor announced that you had decided not to honor that provision. So it would seem to me that indeluctibly you must have made a decision in that regard in your executive session. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Mum.
Betty Mum, Oregon City resident. I'm here to speak about your last meeting, too, and I was reading the newspaper articles about Mr. Frazier, and there was one in there that caught my eye, and it said, "People are not normally fired for one single issue." And that made me start thinking about the past, and I was up there where you're sitting and thinking about that, and I just wanted to publicly apologize to our senior staff for not being more intuitive to what was going on and not being available to them. I felt like, you know, I needed to do that, and also to encourage you guys to figure out some kind of policy so that senior staff, that people can talk to you without being a fear of retaliation. So just something for you guys to think about. How can you do that? I do have ideas, but I won't bore you with my ideas. So that's all I needed for this go-around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look, 150.
Commissioner Roth? You're the only one on the list.
Whoa, okay. Hi, Kathy.
Hi. Hi. I'm going to beg your indulgence because there's some big FEMA words in here, so I might go like three minutes and 30 seconds. Would that be okay?
Aye.
Okay. I can't pronounce them very quickly. Okay, I'm here tonight to address two different issues. One is, number one, I work for the city of Portland as Emergency Management Preparedness Manager. It's my job to advise and to be knowledgeable regarding issues concerning disaster mitigation and recovery. I have spoken loud and often regarding the proposal to cite Public Works facility on the Waterboard property. Ignorance is not an excuse for irresponsibility, and my opinion is that Oregon City Public Works is using every effort to try to turn a blind eye to the gross irresponsibility of citing Public Works at Waterboard Park. I have four FEMA documents here that I just gave to Katie that will summarize, I will summarize for you. Make no mistakes, I want every citizen of Oregon City to know, and most urgently, the staff to know, that irresponsibility will have dire consequences and in the form of nonexistent federal reimbursement when, not if, Waterboard Park faces a cascading earthquake or a major landslide. Continuity Guidance Circular Number Two establishes Public Works as a national essential function facility. This means it is a critical facility at all times and, as such, has the responsibility to be cited so that the facility is capable of rapid recovery and service in the case of a disaster. Circular Two also addresses site accessibility in the case of a disaster. Document Number Two is the Response and Recovery Directorate from the Policy Number 95242. It states that, number one, the site stability is to be ascertained. If the site is found unstable, and you can see the site, the Dugami and the LiDAR maps regarding that, if it's unstable from pre-existing conditions, such as a deep-seated site plane, slip plane, which that is, in restoration, the jurisdiction is responsible for restoration of the facility site to a precondition, and that restoration is not eligible for FEMA restoration monies. Document Four is the Critical Facility Design Considerations from FEMA. Site selection requires a risk assessment for the proposed facility and a full understanding of the hazards, including hazard mitigation and hazard resistance measures to ensure uninterrupted operations of critical facilities. It goes on to say that the site selection should include an exhaustive evaluation of alternate sites, and that may be difficult and a very long process. Land price should not play a factor, and these are all quotes from FEMA. Land price should not play a factor in the decision, as this will ultimately lead to adversely affecting the community in both immediate response and long-term recovery. Document Number Five, FEMA mitigation, states that to help mitigate hazards, communities can acquire and demolish or relocate at-risk buildings and infrastructure and enforce permanent restrictions on development. Bottom line, placing Public Works on the Waterboard Park site is grossly negligent, and when disaster happens, you can be assured that this information will make its way to the proper channels. Lastly, I'd like to inform the commission, this is on a separate issue, that at no time during discussion concerning David Frazier's contract when I sat as a commissioner, were we advised by any attorney that we were entering into a contract that would not be enforceable. Given that the mayor advised us of the precedents, the current mayor advised us of the precedence of a great body of law, that a current commission cannot bind a future commission, I would like to know why the prior commission was not advised of this by the city attorney, and moreover, I would strongly recommend that as a commission, we ratify the contract as a unified body. That was very strongly advised of us in executive session, that we ratify as a unified body. I was not able to follow that recommendation. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Commissioner Nacita.
James Nacita, I live in Oregon City. I'm also here tonight to speak about the termination of Mr. Frazier's contract and the role of the city attorney. Back in January of last year, 2014, I made a presentation to the Citizens' Involvement Council regarding transparency in Oregon City, and I expressed an opinion that evening that one of the obstacles, I felt, was institutional, and that is that the city manager and not the commission in Oregon City hires and fires the city manager, and that we're only one of two jurisdictions in the whole metropolitan area where that's the case.
Did you not mean the attorney?
The seat attorney, I'm sorry, thank you. Every other jurisdiction except us and Tuolatin has the commission hire and fire the city Following up on some of the other comments I've heard tonight, I think what's happened in this case is another instance that I think provides ample evidence that we should change our charter to have you, the commission, be the person, be the body that hires and fires the city attorney. There are so many instances where the manager and the commission are potentially in conflict, and to have the base privileges of advice accrue to the manager and that might not get to the commission, and the commission being berefted of information and advice in making decisions is, to me, a problem. I don't know what happened in this case. I was not on the commission when Mr. Frazier's contract was extended for the multi-year period. I did appear in 2013 along with others to speak against that contract, and obviously I was not privy to any confidential conversations in executive sessions about the manager's contract, so I'd like to only speak in hypotheticals. If the manager directed the attorney not to provide information or advice because the city attorney is his employee, that's a problem. That needs to be changed institutionally. If, on the other hand, it was a result of an error on the part of the city attorney, then the commission, I believe, needs to have a direct root of accountability regarding the city attorney as to discipline, termination, et cetera, for instances where there are large errors. I mean, I can't, I don't know what happened in this instance, again, I wasn't on the commission at the time, so I'm using these as hypotheticals, but there's a whole raft of similar situations that can arise, and I think, I would ask again, that the commission really consider seriously doing a referendum to the citizens to change the charter in that regard. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else on my list. Anybody else want to speak? Now's your chance. Okay, then we're moving on. Everybody okay with the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. So first up, we have public hearings 15-563, ordinance for introduction number 15-1012, Pavilion Park Three Development Application for Zone Change, file ZZC 15-02, and subdivision file TP 15-03. Mr. Conkle, is this you? Or we're going to have Ms. Turway do this?
We have Ms. Turway.
Okay.
Good evening, Laura Turway. I'm a planner with the city. Thank you, Commissioner and Mayor. So the application that was submitted to the planning department is for a zone change and a subdivision located on McCord Road. Let's see if we can get this to work. All right, so here is an aerial photo of the subject site. As you can tell, it is, sorry. So, the subject site consists of a Christmas tree farm located near the edge of the city, near McCord Road and Leland Road. It is surrounded generally by neighborhoods and the city on most of the sides, although there is adjacent county properties as well. The Oregon City Planning Department reviewed the application in accordance with all approval criteria in the Oregon City Municipal Code. All of the chapters are listed there. All the findings associated with each of the approval criteria are provided in the staff report. So there were two applications, a zone change and a subdivision. First, let's talk about the zone change. The applicant's property is currently zoned R10, which is a single-family residential on lots of 10,000 square feet as a minimum. They've proposed to change the zoning designation to R6, which is also a single-family residential, but it's on a 6,000-square-foot minimum. As you can tell on the map, the property is adjacent to R6, and also the brown property is smaller, it's a 3,500-square-foot minimum, it's R3.5. So it has a variety of zoning designations and the gray county property around it. The applicant has proposed a subdivision layout. We believe that the layout does comply with our code with the applicable conditions of approval. The layout includes extending the street network to meet our connectivity requirements, installation of planter strips, sidewalks, and street trees, and so forth. You can tell in the subdivision layout, there's these dashed lines where the roadways end, so we took a look at future street connections in the future. That's why the street layouts for lots 16 and 17 look as though they do. So we wanted to make sure that when other properties develop around it, our street system will be complete. The applicant has submitted a tree removal plan. Generally, it involves removing about 16 trees, or 26 trees, rather, and according to our tree mitigation code, they would replant about 40 trees in its place. Now, it is a Christmas tree farm, and so you might wonder, aren't they removing more trees, or where are all the trees on this map? And our code requires mitigation or replanting of trees when the trees removed are six inches in diameter or greater, and most of the trees on the site were not. There is a proposed utility plan that was submitted. Next, I wanted to talk about the issues that were raised during planning commission review. So planning commission reviewed this item over a series of three hearings and recommended approval to the city commission. The items that came up were regarding a water main extension on Leland and McCord Roads and also traffic and street conditions. First, let's talk about the water main extension. So our code requires that properties extend utilities, including water mains, to and through their property. This colorful map shows the water lines. You can see the existing lines are identified in black, so the end of the row. And then the applicant would have to extend the utility lines in the area identified in red, and then along their fringes, which is the area identified in blue. So they would have to do approximately 490 feet of off-site water main extensions to get the water main to their property, and then about 310 feet of water mains adjacent to their property. We do believe this is appropriate condition of approval. It's required in our code. We did an analysis to determine that the water main does, in fact, benefit the site. It provides increased water pressure, fire flows, water quality, and there's also a benefit for redundancy. If there's an outage, the pressure stays up. We did a proportionality analysis. We did two methods to determine that the amount of water main that they are proposing is proportional to the development that they've proposed. And then also, as a separate note, there is a separate SDC credit process in which they can apply for SDC credits for portions of those water mains as well. If you have any questions regarding that, we have our city engineer here to address them. The second issue that we addressed, that were addressed in the public comments, but not at the public hearing, was traffic concerns. So we received a series of two letters regarding issues related to traffic. The applicant does a traffic study by a traffic engineer. That traffic study comes into the city. The city hires a traffic consultant, John Riplinger with Riplinger &amp; Associates, who's here to answer your questions as well, and he does a study. So that was done, then we received public comments regarding additional concerns related to generally traffic issues that you see on the screen, and so John Riplinger went back and did a supplemental to his study just to confirm that his conclusions that he initially made were correct, and they were. And with that, we still believe that the development as proposed with the conditions of approval complies with all of our applicable criteria, like site distance and things like Next, there is a couple of conditions of approval that we just recently realized need to be amended. The first one is condition of approval number 28. There is a sheet, I think there's some in the back, the applicant has a copy. Don't believe I can pass it around for the commission, and it identifies that in condition of approval 28, we ask for 54 feet of right-of-way, but when we ask for the 54 feet of right-of-way, we list what's included in the 54 feet, and we only listed 52 feet worth of stuff. And so we want to amend the condition of approval to reflect what our code says and what our TSP says, to reflect exactly what the 54 feet entails. What was missing was a half a foot on the landscape strip and the half a foot for public access. So the right-of-way improvements generally include 32 feet of pavement, then a landscape strip, including a curb, which is where that six inches comes from. So the grass part is five feet with a six-inch curb, then a five-foot sidewalk, and then there's a half a foot behind the sidewalk. So if we need to make sidewalk repairs, we can, we can step on that half foot of property if we need to. There are four other conditions of approval that need to be amended because they did not include the half a foot of public access. So those are the five conditions of approval that we are proposing to amend. We have the proposed language in front of you. With that, we're asking for approval for planning files ZC 1502 and TP 1503. And then I also wanted to remind the commission that the hearing is on the record, so the record was closed by the planning commission. We did receive one public comment that was turned in regarding traffic issues after the public comments, after the record was closed. Staff does, do believe that the information identified in the second letter is all in the record. There's only one thing in that letter that is new information, which you cannot use to make a decision, and the piece of information that you cannot remember or use is when there was a reference to history about McCord Road and the neighbor talking to the to history about McCord Road and the neighbor talking to the county, talking to the city, then being referred to the county, and so forth. So, that you cannot consider when you make a decision, but it is not part of our approval criteria anyway. Are there any questions I can answer for you? We have both our transportation engineer, as well as our city engineer here as well.
Okay, so, at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing.
Before we do that, let me read the statute of early required warnings.
Okay.
That the applicable criteria were identified in the staff report that should have been available back in the room. If you'd like me to read that, please let me know, and I can do so. In addition, testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards a criteria described in the staff report, or other criteria in the plan or land use regulations that you believe apply to this application. Failure to raise any issues accompanied by statements that have been sufficient to afford the city commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to those issues would preclude appeal of the board based on that issue. In addition, those who have been to raise concerns about conditions would preclude a later action in circuit court to challenge those conditions. With that, I would also like to invite whether there are any challenges to the... First, ask the commission if there are any ex parte contacts.
Conflict issues, conflict of interest issues that the commission would like to declare?
No.
Nope.
Any challenges from the audience to any member of the commission? Okay.
Okay, so, I'm open to public hearing, and I have two folks that are listed as speakers here, Michael Robinson from the applicant, and John Riplinger, which I believe is the city's consultant. So, you guys want to come up?
So, Mr. Riplinger is here to answer any questions, so he's sort of on standby if you need him.
Oh, okay. All right, Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Holliday. Is this on? Am I doing this right?
Yeah.
Okay. Never get used to this. Good evening, Mayor Holliday, members of the commission. My name is Mike Robinson. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I also want to let you know there are some other folks representing the applicant here today. There's Mark Handris, who's the applicant, Darren Gustorf, who's his project manager, Rick Evans, who's the planner, and Bruce Goldson, who's the engineer. They're all here to answer your questions. If I can't, and we would like you to ask us questions. If there are things that come up during our presentation that we don't address, that we're interested in, please ask us. We're here to answer your questions. I'd also will tell you, we agree with the modified conditions of approval 26 through 30. Can I compliment Laura? I think it's nice that we got it caught now instead of caught at the construction stage. So, thank you to Laura. Good job. My presentation will be brief. First of all, we agree with all the findings and conditions of approval related to the zoning map amendment. We think the planning commission got it right. The substantial evidence supports the zoning map amendment. Secondly, we agree with all the findings and conditions of approval regarding subdivision application with the sole exception of condition of approval eight, which is found at page two of the staff report, and I'll come back to that in a moment. And third, to the extent Mr. Neal's October 12 testimony contains facts that are in the planning commission record, and I think I agree with Laura about her analysis of that, I think the city commission can find that those issues are well addressed in the findings prepared by staff and adopted by the planning commission, and they're supported by substantial evidence, not only the applicant's own traffic study, but Mr. Riplinger's analysis that's found at pages 22 and 23 of the staff report. So, let me go back to condition of approval eight. That's the condition that requires the applicant to install an off-site 308-foot water line. It's shown and read on the slide before you. And I want to emphasize, this isn't a matter of the applicant not willing to do what it's required to do or make the improvements that are necessary. This is the applicant raising an issue about whether this improvement is either appropriate under your code, and we don't think it is, or it's appropriate under relevant constitutional law based on impacts of the application, and we don't think it is. But let me walk through our argument, and at the end, we have a suggestion for you in the way of a condition of approval that we hope you'll accept. So, let me start first with the code requirement. If you were to look in your Oregon City Municipal Code at 1612-095B, that requires that off-site water line extensions be installed to serve, quote, "future development of neighboring undeveloped properties." The properties that are along that off-site line extension shown in red are, in fact, both developed. There are two lots. The one further south clearly shows a house on it. The one further north, when I look at the aerial, shows something on it. But even if that second one isn't developed, it's served by another city water line. Essentially, what the city believes is that we should install this line to provide, to get closer to a looped water system. But that leads me to my second point. That looped water system isn't a requirement of an impact, you don't need to address it because of an impact of our subdivision. That's a benefit generally to the city system, but it's not a benefit to or needed by this application. And that's really the litmus test for whether a local government can require an applicant to do something off-site. And I want to emphasize, we're not objecting to the two blue water lines. Those are on our frontage. We agreed to do those. Nor are we objecting to condition of approval 10, which requires the water line extension on Leland Avenue. We were able to discuss how that could be modified with staff, and your planning commission adopted that modified condition, and we're satisfied with that. So, it's solely limited to that red 308-foot water line extension. The evidence that the city relies upon to meet its burden of proof, and it is the city's burden of proof, just doesn't exist in the record. We appreciate the arguments, but in each case, either the evidence really isn't there in terms of substantial facts, or there's evidence showing there's no impact. So, let me walk through the first issues, or the issues related to that. There's no justification for that water line extension, either for water pressure or fire flow. And by the way, we have a final written argument letter in the record. We go through all this in writing, so if you've had a chance to look at it, what I'm going to summarize is found in more detail at that letter. But in the record is an email from Mike Baumann, who's the deputy fire marshal for the Clarkmas Fire District. He responded to an email from Mr. Gustorf about these questions and said, quote, "Thanks for the email and information. I spoke with the fire marshal, and he was not aware of any pressure or flow issues in that particular area either, but I left a message with Oregon City Public Works because they would have a better information on that. I've not heard back. And in fact, we didn't have any substantial evidence prior to the close of the record." So, what you have is an email in the record from the fire district saying, "We don't have a fire issue out there." In fact, you have a finding in the planning commission decision at page 23 that noted, quote, "There are no concerns about fire services," end quote. So, if there was a concern from the fire district that justified this line extension because of water pressure or looping, you would have had to have had it expressed in some form of evidence, and that simply doesn't exist in the record. There's no need for looping caused by this application. The need for looping may indeed exist, but it's not an impact related to this application. It's a desire of the city to have looped water lines, but because of that, it's not a burden to be borne by this applicant. It's a burden to be borne by the city at large. And lastly, we had our engineer Bruce Goldson testify before the planning commission that there's no basis to assert that the water pressure is inadequate, or that water quality is inadequate, or that it would be improved by looping. Mr. Goldson talked about both of those issues before your planning commission, and there was no contrary evidence. So, this is not my favorite thing to do as a lawyer. I think it's important to work with local governments, and I think it's important for applicants to step up and do the things that are required of them. And that's how we get a better city. This is one of those rare instances, frankly, where we're being asked to do something that's neither justified by the facts, authorized under the code, or meets relevant constitutional law, and this is the only thing that we ask you to change in the decision. So, I promised you I would offer a condition that I thought might work. Mr. Mayor, we're comfortable with condition of approval 10, which provides for SDC credits. Unfortunately, the eight-inch water line is not an upsizing, so technically, if we came back for an SDC credit, I'm not sure the city could grant it to us. But ORS Chapter 223, which governs system development charging credits, authorizes local governments to provide for credits essentially where it's fair. So, what we would ask you to do is to either delete the condition of approval, but I think a better way to do this is simply authorize in the condition of approval payment of credits of one-half of the cost of the water line. The evidence of the cost of the water line is not in the record, so I can't go there, but I can tell you that Mr. Handris is comfortable paying for half of it if the city commission will provide for SDC credits for the other half. We think that's a fair compromise. We don't think it's our obligation at all, but we'd like to assist the city, and we're willing to split the cost. And you can certainly imagine, although I can't get into the facts, you can certainly imagine that the work can be probably done more efficiently and for less cost if we do it in conjunction with the mobilization for construction of this subdivision. That's all I have. We appreciate your time. See if there's any last-minute important things I want to say before I sit down, other than please ask us questions. We're here to answer them. I don't have anything else. We'd ask, when you've heard everyone who wants to speak to this item tonight, that you close the record. We don't want final written argument, and approve the ordinance on first reading. And again, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Riplinger, do you have anything?
Only to respond to your questions.
Well, you should come up then.
My name is John Riplinger, and I serve as consulting transportation engineer for the city of Oregon City, and have done so for many years.
Okay, so you're transportation, not water?
Transportation.
Okay. So, Ms. Turway, you want to give us the short version of why we're asking for extension of water lines outside of the subdivision?
Lita Froman-Goodrich, our city engineer, can do that for you.
Okay.
Good evening, commissioners and mayor. I think the one document that's been submitted to the record is the September 14 GSB document that summarizes quite well the benefits to the subdivision that is being proposed, and also the nexus for requiring these water lines, as well as the proportionality analysis that's required. The, a little further background as far as the improvements at hand, how they've been reviewed and included and adopted in the 2012 Water Master Plan that looks for deficiencies and building a sustainable and maintainable system. One portion of the benefits is the looping of the system, which on all of our systems, we do have a maintenance program for any new dead ends that are developed. In this particular development, if that loop was not made, there would be two new dead ends that would need to become part of a maintenance program to ensure that the water quality is there for those customers that would be along that system. That's probably, you know, the main benefits. Again, the four general ones that have been described in the GSB memo with increased residual water pressures at peak demands, enhanced fire flows, again, providing redundancy, and definitely increasing the water quality for that portion of the system.
Summarize, there's no doubt for the city staff that there is a requirement to extend the water lines to and through the property, and that it is legal to do so.
No surprise, we have two lawyers that have different sides of the same argument. Mr. Kabeisman.
I want to focus on the constitutional issues, because I think those are the ones that really are a bit trickier, and essentially, I think it's pretty clear our code allows us to impose this. The question is whether or not there are two pieces. One, is there an essential nexus? Is the requirement something that was caused by this development or related to this development? And essentially, what staff has done is looked at what's going to, what has caused, the impacts of this development and said, you know, as with every other development, you want a good water system. Looping is important for a water system. The water quality, as you heard the city engineer just talk about, that if, in fact, it's not looped, you're going to get dead ends. And if this, so, you know, the development of this property without that looping requirement is going to have impacts on the city's water system. And so, we think it's pretty clear that there is an essential nexus between the impacts of this development and the requirement to connect those with the water quality, the looping, increased water pressure. I do want to note that Mr. Robinson read a quote, but I don't think he quite finished the quote from the fire chief. "Thanks for the email and info. I spoke with the fire marshal. I was not aware of any pressure or flow issues in particular, but I left a message to Oregon City Public Works because they would have been better info on that. I have not heard back. I did notice on our maps that McCord coverage isn't very good." And that tells you that the fire chief does, in fact, have some concerns about water pressure out in that area.
But he had the opportunity to do that in the record and didn't do it, right? Or did he?
He did. That's part of the record. Mr. Robinson, when he read his quote, didn't finish the last piece, but he does go on, and he says, "On Leland, the hydrant cover is not ideal either, but we're not talking about Leland." So, that's the essential nexus piece. The other piece is, there's got to be rough proportionality. You know, if, in fact, somebody has an impact on an intersection, but it's going to cost $20 million to fix the intersection, fix the intersection, and it's only, you know, $500,000 improvement, that's not proportional. And there's a number of cases that have sort of laid out how much, what type of analysis has to be done, and essentially, they said, you can't, you're comparing apples and oranges in terms of the impacts and the costs. So, you just try to roughly divide it. And so, that's what the September 14 memo does, is look at, you know, the impact of the zone change increasing nine additional dwellings, the cost of, you know, the necessary 800 feet of water line by the 25 additional lot that'll benefit, and allocation of 32 linear feet of pipe per exaction. And so, the city, you know, goes through an analysis and basically determines that, in fact, it is roughly proportional, and so, we think it is justified to, under both the essential nexus and the rough proportionality, to require this improvement.
I'm a little confused. I'm looking at the map here with the red lines. Are there, or are there not, water lines in place now?
There's not. The blue line is what would be required, is required under the code for the subject property. The red lines are, the black dots are the end of the city's existing water line, and the red line is the additional pipe they're asking the applicant to put in the ground to reach the pipe that they are going to have to put in.
And the property that's to this direction is within the city limits? Is that right?
Yes, it's surrounded by property within the city limits.
So, in theory, when those lots divide and redevelop, if they ever do, they would also benefit from this water line extension?
So, the lots that are, I assume we're talking south, on the south side of McCord, is that right?
Can we point? I think we've addressed the concern for the Leland Road. The at-issue is the approximately 300-foot, 308 feet. That's a previous subdivision. The opens, this lot you see right there is actually a stormwater pond that provides stormwater management for that subdivision above it. So, we're discussing the red section of the 308 feet.
So, that's not a problem anymore?
We've been able to address that one with the applicant.
Okay. So, my question is, assuming we make the applicant put this pipe in, is there some way that we can recover, or that they could recover a piece of that from, say, 19525 and 19573 when they develop? Because they will be, you know, because obviously...
And we're talking about, you know, there's a process in the code called the reimbursement district, and I have to go back and look at that. That wasn't a solution that was identified by the planning commission, and I believe there is an opportunity for those who would otherwise be impacted by the reimbursement district to object, and it would, you know, it's a process we'd have to work our way through, and we would have to look at whether that's a possibility.
What is the approximate cost of the 308 feet?
It's not in the record.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's handy.
So, I have a question. Has there been another example of having to loop before another development, having to complete that loop? And, I mean, has this been done before? I know it's part of the code.
It's also not in the record.
It's not in the record.
And I wanted to specify as well that, so you can see that there's no line here. So, the looping and all the benefits we identified are, will occur after the line is completed. There will be some benefits immediately.
Which may or may never happen. Which may or may never happen.
True.
Yes, so there's dead ends either way?
So, it's just the ability to do the looping is what it is enabling?
Yeah, so there is four benefits that we perceived. Looping is one of them. But the line on McCord and Leland still will not be connected at this point. It will be connected to the internal site, though.
And the looping does go to the north. The system does exist at the black dot up to the north there.
Here's a question. So, I assume that if, can you get me back to a site plan? Oh, something, yeah, there you go. Okay. So, I assume there's also going to be some kind of mains inside this roadway network that are going to serve all these houses, right?
That is correct.
So, from a technical standpoint, aren't you creating that loop by having a main here and a main out on Leland through the internal, the internal mains?
So, the, I'm sorry. So, the looping that will occur in the interior mains is this loop here connecting through to here and here. This will be a dead end. That will be a dead end. And without this connection, this will be a dead end, and that will be a dead end on McCord Road. The proposed connection and extension from McCord Road is from here to the city's existing system. So, that will be an additional loop here. And then, that will be just, whoops. And then, this will be a dead end, a short dead end. Without this section, this will have about, I think it was like a 500-foot dead end, and this one will be about 400 or so.
So, let's go back to the pipe map again. Where would this site be getting water from without these two extensions?
Sorry, I'm not very good with this. There'll be a main extending from this location, and this location, and this location from existing system. So, it'll be looped through here and here.
And as part of the condition of this development, would we be, would the applicant or would the city be expanding and improving McCord and Leland to the two areas of the site?
Street improvements, the applicant would be installing or paying fee in lieu of for street improvements along their frontage only. Along both, all roads.
So, a half-street improvement along that, 260 feet of frontage on McCord, and 50 feet of half-street improvement on Leland.
That is correct.
So, in reality, if the line is extended from the black dot down to the edge of the frontage, you are still creating looping inside the facility through those other mains.
On the McCord Road section?
Yes. So, and I know you say you've got Leland taken care of, but is that being taken care of by building the pipe or by some other means?
Constructing the pipe.
Okay.
The way Leland was resolved is that there were eligibility for SDC credits, and so the developer will be building it as part of its approval here. So, there will be a pipe.
Okay.
So, the extension on McCord, you said there's a water swell right there on the right?
Mosquito breeding facility.
Okay.
This is a water detention pond.
And so, that is, that will still be city property?
Yes, it currently is city property and will remain city property. The development is using that pond to expand, expanding the pond for their stormwater requirements for detention.
Okay, so then that extension would go along city property?
The expansion, yes, the extension of the water line will go along city property. That's correct.
So, my question is, this doesn't have to be remanded back to planning?
No, they recommended approval with conditions as you see it.
With the 308, with this discussion of these extensions here. So, they recommended approval, just what we're seeing here with that extension. So, this is what the challenge is tonight here.
And at the planning commission, was this objection raised?
Yes. To talk about proportionality nexus, that most of the comments were more directed towards Leland at that point, but our, all of our analysis has included both McCord and Leland.
So, I would be interested in the, what the applicant had suggested about, just to see, we don't know the cost. Is that correct of?
We're still, hang on, Brian, we're still in the, we're still in the public hearing portion. So, let's see if there's any other comments or response from the applicant, and then I can close the public hearing, and then we can deliberate.
I thought that's what you guys were all doing here, so I was doing it.
Was there, I apologize. Was there a question that we were?
No, I was just carrying this here, so I just, good.
So, does the applicant have a rebuttal?
Was there anyone?
Thanks, John. No, I don't think.
Nothing.
Mr. Golton has signed up, but he's here.
Okay.
So, let me sit down first. Mr. Mayor, Mike Robinson, again, on behalf of the applicant, let me address the testimony by Ms., I hope I get it, Froman Goodrich?
Froman Goodrich.
Thank you, and Ms. Kabeisman. And first of all, Bill's exactly right. There's a second sentence to the engineer's letter, but least you think I was trying to deceive you. I included the full quote, well, he obviously read from the email, it's in the record. I included the full quote in my final written argument, because it's important that they hear everything. But that final sentence said, as Bill said, "I did notice on our maps the McCord coverage isn't very good." He did not go on in the email and say, "By the way, I need a new water line," or "I need a loop." So, you have that absence of evidence. Secondly, let me talk about what Ms. Goodrich, well, let me go back. I'll just finish with Ms. Kabeisman's comments to you. I agree with his two-part analysis about how courts look at takings, but you don't get to rough proportionality unless there are impacts. Here, there are no impacts. You have two dead ends now. You're going to have a dead end at the end of this. And as the rebuttal, as the staff discussion explained, we're looping inside the water line. But I think the point is, and you get this from Ms. Froman Goodrich's comments to you, they're looking to implement your master plan. That clearly goes to a benefit to the community. It has nothing to do with the impacts of a small subdivision like this. And yes, no city wants unlooped water lines. The question is, did we create the problem? No, there are two dead ends there now. We're going to fix it to some extent. We're constructing, if my math is correct, we're constructing almost 500 feet of water lines in Leland and McCord. The only thing we think isn't appropriate is to ask us to fix a problem that we neither created nor exacerbate. It's something that was there when we came to the property. It's something that will be there, i.e. a dead end, after we leave the property. It's clearly something that the community has a whole lot to be fixing and not calling upon a particular applicant to do it. I also want to make clear, and I think Tony and Bill told you this, we're fine with Condition of Approval 10 relating to Leland Road. We were able to work that out. We appreciate the time that staff put in to that with us, so we're not contesting that. Ms. Kabeisman had suggested, or I think Mayor, you'd asked whether a reimbursement district was possible. That was actually discussed at the planning commission. And in the way of argument, not facts, the problem with a reimbursement district is twofold. There's no certainty. If the properties that are subject to reimbursement obligation never develop within, typically it's a 10 or maybe a 20-year period, the person who made the improvement gets zero. And secondly, I think it would be extraordinary, it's my personal opinion, and because you have two lawyers, you can get at least two or more opinions.
Yes.
I think it would be extremely difficult to, I mean, I just think it's unlikely that we could recover through a typical reimbursement district our cost in a substantial fashion from those properties. So, we appreciate the offer. I think your planning commission went out of the way to help brainstorm a solution, but reimbursement districts, while they work in some instances, in my personal opinion, this probably isn't an instance where it would satisfy us. Before we finish up, I want Mr., well, let me, I'm sorry, let me go back to one.
You've got two minutes.
Pardon me?
You've got two minutes left.
Wow, okay. All of us, or?
Yes.
Okay, 30 seconds. The September 14th memorandum from Garvey Schubert-Bayer is assertions about what the benefits are. There's not substantial evidence. The evidence that I recited in our presentation to this commission are facts from our engineer, facts from the Fire Department, and factual findings in the planning commission decision that in fact refute the arguments that that memorandum suggests. So, let me, before I take up all the oxygen, let Bruce talk.
Okay, for the record, my name is Bruce Golson. I'm the engineer for the project. In the benefits listed in, by the city, water pressure is not an issue. Water pressure will not change whether we connect, unconnect, do anything, because that's based where the water is stored. It has nothing to do with this project. Looping will not accomplish anything to benefit that.
This is in the record?
It's in the record as well. Looping, as the truth of the matter is, all subdivisions, most subdivisions end in a dead-end street, and therefore, they're dead-end. Until some future development comes along and hooks onto them, which we are doing, we're connecting up two dead-end lines now and improving one that's just kind of a four-inch line, making it better. So, we're going to end up with two dead ends on McCord and Leland Road. But the truth of the matter is, we have services because we have lots there. They will actually take service off those ends of those lines, so it's not truly a dead-end stagnant water. There will be blowoffs there to accommodate better water quality. So, I think those issues are not true in their analysis. We don't increase the water pressure. The looping, looping is not a benefit to this. We are forcing loops within our subdivision because of the dead-end streets that are currently there.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight, and we would encourage you to consider the modified condition, but we appreciate the questions, and we appreciate your listening to us.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there anybody, other folks that wish to comment on this? Then I'm going to close the public hearing at this point. And now, we can ask away. So, Mr. Shaw?
So, this project could go on without the 308-foot line. Is that correct? Because they do have other water lines coming into it.
I don't know.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I'd be curious about the cost of that 308.
As would we all. Unfortunately, we apparently can't mention any numbers because it's not in the record. Now, why it would not be, why somebody on the planning commission didn't ask that question, I have no idea.
And I would be interested to know if this has been done before, having to create a loop outside the subject site. So, which is not on the record either.
Well, Mr. Magelberg, anything to say?
No.
All right. Well, it seems to me that when we look at this map, it makes sense to extend that water line for the future. But I also agree with the applicant that it's, you know, it's improving the system for the entire area, not just for their site. It seems to me that they've come to us with a fairly reasonable offer. Anybody care to comment on that?
Well, I think development pays its way, but they are extending their lines through their site. And to extend it beyond, could you argue that the new development would then extend that? I'm just not sure if there's a precedence for this, and it goes way beyond their site, the red lines.
It just seems a little crazy to me that we would be, and I know I'll get all kinds of stuff for this, but we're building a, without the extension, we're building 260 feet of pipe in the ground that's going to be empty. Somehow, that's counterintuitive to me.
It'll be connected.
It'll be.
It'll be connected and full of water?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it won't be going anywhere.
Correct.
So, it'll be two dead ends.
Correct.
Right. Like we have now. Like we will have. So, it'll just be longer dead ends.
Instead of a dead end at the two black dots, you'll now have two more in McCord, but you'll have a segment of it.
So, instead of having two dead ends, we're going to have four dead ends?
If you did not build the McCord section.
So, is it a question of the 308 feet to the property, is the question more who pays for it, and it will be built anyway? Whether, so the city wouldn't build the 308 feet as part of its?
The city currently does not have a funding source for that water main.
And there's no opportunity for the other properties to pay for that later? They're already built out?
The other property, they're in county.
They're in the county.
Right? The other side of McCord Road's county?
That is correct.
So, that's the issue.
And typically, the...
You asked the county, though.
So, I guess I'm confused. I thought the blue line was the city limits. So, the properties immediately adjacent to McCord are in the city. Is that correct?
The blue line's the representation of the pipe.
No, no, that's just...
I'll switch it to the zoning map.
We'll go to the zoning map. That's the UGB line.
The UGB line, not the city limits.
Correct, yep, sorry about that. Oh, different map? Okay.
So, the properties with colors and numbers noted on them are within the city. The gray is Clackamas County, but inside our urban growth boundary.
I thought we fixed that before. It just keeps coming up, man. Well...
I guess I would say that the applicant is asking for a concession to be able to upzone or downzone. I'm not sure what the right word is, but get more density on the site, which means more financial gain for their development, and that comes at a cost. So, I would be leaning toward supporting staff recommendation on this.
Yeah, it's not like, you know, we're going from an R10 to an R6. What is it, 20?
We are going from an R10 to an R6.
I know, we are, and, which is like nine more dwellings, correct?
That is correct.
Nine additional sites.
Yeah.
It would have been 16, developed at R10, and 25 at R6.
Well, I'm telling you, it would be very handy to understand how much that pipe would cost. It sort of makes it difficult to make a mathematical decision when you only have half of the equation. Mr. Montalvo, I'm going to throw you under the bus here.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, generally speaking, what does it cost to put?
It's not in the record.
We can't, we bring it into we.
You guys are killing me, really?
But I can say that what is in the record is that we did some proportionality analysis to show that it is proportional.
How did you do proportionality analysis without knowing how much the pipe would cost?
It was based on the ratio, there were two proportionality... It was based on the ratio, there were two proportionality analyses that were done. One was based on the length of the pipe that would need to be constructed between Leland Road and McCord, and splitting that, dividing that number of pipe by the number of lots that each development that would benefit from that pipe would get. So, we took the subject site at 25 lots, and however much lineal feet of water line they would have to build, divided by 25, and that gave us a number, so however many lineal feet of pipe per lot. And we also took and did the math to figure out for these two sites between the city limits and their subject site on Leland. We took that length of pipe, divided the number, by the number of lots they would see upon further development, and got a number there. The applicant's was lower than that. Then we took and did the same for this corner here. So, the lineal pipe they would have to build here, divided by the number of lots that could be achieved under the R-10 zoning designation, and they too, the subject site had the lowest number of all three. So, we have that methodology. Then the second methodology is, we took the length of pipe the applicant would have to build, and divided it by the square footage, or the number of lots on their site. So, rather than a calculation of lineal feet of pipe per lot, we said that they, of all the lots that can be constructed, the applicant had a certain percentage. I think they were building 57% of the lots, but only were having to pay for 37% of the lineal feet of pipe that was necessary to complete the system. So, two methodologies slightly complicated. In both methodologies, the applicant had to pay a smaller share than either their neighbors would have to pay, or they were paying for a smaller share of the system than they were having to build. So, that was the letter in the Garvey Schubert-Bair analysis that's being referenced.
Well, it, it seems like a unique situation because it abuts county property, and my question is with, you know, consistency, I'd hate to ask somebody to do something that we don't require of everybody else, but because it's a unique situation, I guess it's hard to even find a comparison. But it does go way outside of their subject site, which is interesting to me.
There are just a lot of county property right there, and it looks like, I don't know how the city would be beneficial to what's going to happen here with that extra pipe, because it's county property. It would be.
You mean on the other side of the road?
On the other side, but that, they're still going to pull off of that line, even if it's on that side, right?
Well.
If anything happens on the other side.
If it develops, yeah.
If it develops, they will use that line, okay? But if it develops, it'll probably be in the city then, wouldn't it?
How are those, are these, are the lots on the south side of McCord, are those being served by CRW?
Yes, that's correct.
So, CRW's line's running down McCord too, then?
Yes, that is correct.
That's a lot of water lines.
Here we go.
Is there any evidence about the condition of those CRW water lines?
Yes, all of the CRW water lines within Leland Road and McCord Road are in very, very poor condition. The, they are having leak problems, et cetera. They, they do plan to slowly transfer that service district area to the city as we continue to build our system out. They're going to be removing their system.
Sure, as we build new stuff, they can get rid of their old mangy stuff.
Exactly. But they are, are patching, they don't have fire protection out in this area as well.
That's not in the record.
Strike the last sentence regarding that, that is not in the record.
Well, it seems to me, this is a complicated and, you know, difficult question, but, you know, I see the benefits of the city. I also understand the argument of the applicant, and I think the applicant came with a compromise that seems fairly reasonable to me. I mean, I, while we, nobody can put a number on this for some reason, I don't see, see it as being, you know, a huge dollar amount, given the fact that it's only 308 feet. So, now, now, the definition of huge in anybody's book, I don't know, but, you know, since we can't use numbers, because we apparently don't have them, I don't know.
I think you're correct, Mayor, but that's where I was going with it first, that there's just this, you know, it's, it's a balance here of the client and the city, and I think that the compromise is something to be looked at myself.
Because it benefits the city.
Mr. Kabaisman?
I do have one concern that, that we've been discussing and don't have the answer to. There are some provisions that allow SD, you know, the, the proposal wasn't to split the halves, they were going to build half, and the city was going to provide SDC credits on the other half. We're not certain it's eligible for SDC credits. To be qualified for SDC credits, it's got to be required as a condition of development, identified in the capital improvement plans, and we don't think the McCord piece is part of the capital improvement plan. So, if we were going to head down that path of SDC credits, what I would suggest the commission do as part of the, the condition of approval would be to say, to the extent allowed by law, you know, the city would provide SDC credits.
Well, that's sort of a, for lack of a better term, a weasel word, you know? Either we, either we make the deal, or we don't make the deal. But, you know, the, the applicant has to have some kind of certainty about what's going on before they go down the road. Is it, or is it not in the capital improvement plan?
So, one provision that I believe can be made, but I, I'd want counsel to, to let me know on this, is, I think there can be projects added to the CIP list if it is authorized for, for doing that by resolution, I believe. So, currently, that, that system is not on the CIP list of improvements, but it.
It can be after your next meeting.
It can be added.
Can we do this, subject to doing that?
Yes.
Or vice versa, or?
So, you know, again, because it's not on the capital improvement plan at this point, you know, it's somewhat uncertain, but to the extent you were to later adopt the capital improvement plan that included this, then you would in fact, you know, then it would be a level by law.
So, how, where are we, are, are, are we constrained by the 120-day rule or anything at this point?
No, we had zone change a subject.
We are.
And how much time do we have left?
We have time for one more city commission hearing.
Okay, and if we're striving to get to, who's talking for the applicant? Can you come back up? So, if we're striving to get to where you want to go, would you have a problem with us postponing this so that we can fix the CIP issue?
Not at all. My understanding would be, correct me if I'm wrong, it would be, you're continuing it solely for the purpose of addressing condition of approval, like you're not opening up to additional testimony on other issues.
Correct.
The applicant.
Are we, may I ask Mr. Turway a question?
Sure.
Are we actually up against the 365-day period?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I, subject to discussing with your planner, I, we're of course happy to have you take another meeting to resolve this, and we can talk within this Turway tomorrow. If it requires an additional extension, 120-day clock, we can provide a properly tailored extension for you.
So, is everybody happy with that resolution?
Yeah, it seems reasonable.
Okay, then I'll, I'll take a motion for continuance based only on this one condition of approval.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Polly. Sorry, my screen wasn't coming up. Is there any discussion? Just call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Wow, that was fun.
I'm sorry, I clicked you.
All right, so moving on.
Planning commissioners, what the heck are they?
We're going to the 15-572, second reading of ordinance number 15-1011, Boulder Undevelopment Application for Zone Change File ZC 15-01, Subdivision File TP 15-02, and Natural Resource Overlay District Verification File NR 15-04. Who's doing this? Ms. Turway?
Ms. Turway.
Okay.
Thank you. City staff received an application for a 19-lot subdivision, as well as a zone change from R-10, 10,000 square foot lots, to R-8, 8,000 square foot lots, on properties located near Pease Road and Hampton Drive, as well as a natural resource district verification. The last planning commission hea, or city commission hearing, rather, the city commission approved the first reading of the associated ordinance number 15-1011, and staff asks that the city commission approve the second reading of the associated ordinance.
Is this a public hearing?
You held the public hearing at your last meeting, this is just for a second reading.
Okay, so, I would entertain a motion for second reading and final adoption.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mengeleberg, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? Color roll.
Let's get the.
Oh, we got to ask, actually, we have to have the actual second reading, so.
Ordinance number 15-1011, an ordinance of the City of Oregon City, amending Title 17 zoning, Chapter 17, Point 06020 of the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code, by changing the properties identified as Clackamas County Map 3-2E-07B-02300, Clackamas County Map 3-2E-07BA-07000, and Clackamas County Map 2, 3-2E-07BA-06900, from R-10, Single Family Dwelling District, to R-8, Single Family Dwelling District, and approving a 19-lot subdivision and a natural resource overlay district verification.
Color roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
So, I think before we go on to general business, let's take five minutes, come back at 8:30. Okay, I'm going to call a meeting back to order. Next on the agenda, we have 15-571, continuance of Resolution 15-29, Resolution interpreting the term designated as a park as set forth in Chapter 10, Section 43 of the City of Oregon City Charter. Mr. Lewis is not here, so I guess Mr. Montalvo gets under the bus, or?
I'll, I'll go ahead and take this one.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
Thank you, Mayor, evening commissioners. I do apologize for this. We continue this to this night for the hearing to move, to have, to discuss the parks designation of the Upper Yard for Public Works facility, without realizing Mr. Lewis was going to be at a conference, and so I do apologize for that. I felt it was important that he do be here to be part of that conversation. So, we are recommending that if anyone would like to provide public testimony tonight who came, that you accept that, and then continue it to the next meeting on, on November 4th, to get this, this scored away.
Well, I guess we have little choice in the matter.
It'd be my preference.
Since the guy with all the maps and pictures with the notes on the back isn't here.
Right.
I have a citizen wishing to speak.
So, we have Commissioner Nacita, you want to come up?
Thank you, James Nacita, I live in Oregon City, I'll make this one pretty brief. Since this is taking some time, I, I have had some time to reflect on it, and when I have that much time to reflect on things, things come to my head, and a thought occurred to me, since the last meeting, that I'm kind of curious as to whether this is actually a land use decision under Oregon land use law. I don't have an answer to that. When I used to practice land use law regularly, I have a recollection of something called the significant impacts test under Lubbock case law. I can't even recite it to you, but since this resolution is about one property, whether it's because it's providing a legal interpretation, because it's determining whether the map with the blue institutional zoning designation, or comp plan designation applies to the site, or whether the green comp plan designation with the green on the site applies, I don't know. And if it is a land use decision, the next question would be, are there procedural requirements that apply to land use decisions, such as notice, posting the site, et cetera, that would apply? Again, I don't know, and we'll let those who are charged with making those determinations make the determination, but I just thought I'd raise it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
Well, Mahoney, Oregon City, I'll be blunt, and I'll be right up front with you. This is no place for a public works site, absolutely not. You're going to rue the day if you approve it, either through the planning commission, city, however it's done. This city is growing, and we all know it's growing out that way, and you want your public works site to be central to all the problems that it faces on a daily basis. This area down here is going to be functional and react, react to the blue hair in sight because activities are going to spill over in that direction. You don't want to spend $25 million, and I'm just pulling stuff out of, out of the air. I'm just looking at it from a practical, a practical point of view, but it's also going to be something that you don't want to take on politically. If you open this to the public, and you have a, an open house, you're going to get all kinds of negative reaction, and it's really just not worth it for this community. We can do better as a community, we've done it with the police department by locating that up on Mount Pleasant site. I think that's going to be a great site, and I think that we can do the same thing with our public works, I really do. This is an opportunity to really shine in this decision-making process for the benefit of the public. I understand that these things can get emotional, and they can get internalized. The last thing you want to do is internalize this. Open it to the public. Get their, get their feedback on it. You'll find that there's some very positive reactions to this, but if you put that up there in that neighborhood, and you do that for the next 25, 30, 40 years, it's, it's not going to function the way you want it, it's going to be a sore spot for this community for years to come, and so I want, I want you to think about that. That's all I have to say on, on that matter. Thank you very much.
I just have one question for you, Bob. Where?
Well, not there.
Well, that's easy to say, not there, but where? Find, you go out and find me seven acres inside the city limits that we can build this thing on, and I'll be happy to have that discussion.
All right, if you don't like the way things are going, wait five minutes, all right? It's like the weather. We're going to find something. Eventually, it will come about.
We spent four years looking for something.
Well, let's spend another four years.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
Yep.
Okay, so, are we continuing to a date certain?
Please, November 4th.
I'll accept the motion.
Move to continue Resolution Number 1529 to the November 4th meeting, please.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Polly. Color roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Yes.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
So, last one, 15-576, Resolution 15-32, Resolution declaring the city commission's intention of appointing another city manager within the four months prescribed by the city charter. Is there any discussion? Mr. Conkle?
We brought this resolution forward per the charter, upon any vacancy occurring in the office manager after the first deployment pursuant to this chapter, which did occur, the commission at this, at its next meeting shall. the commission at this, at its next meeting shall adopt a resolution of its intention to appoint another manager, not later than four months after adopting the resolution. The commission shall appoint a manager to fill the vacancy. This is per Oregon City Charter, Chapter five, powers and duties of officers, section twenty-one subsection B. So we did prepare this resolution essentially stating what was in the charter, your intention to hire, appoint another city manager, and complete that task within four months.
What if we didn't?
There's no consequences spelled out in the charter, the quite, you know, what, the charter just requires you to state your intent to do so.
Okay. So what is the process? You talked a little bit before we met about what we have to do to get rolling on this.
So, and I've also got the HR director, Mr. Lefler, here.
Come on down.
To assist with this conversation.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Having been through this in two thousand nine and ten with the, with the, when Mr. Patterson retired, there is a process, and the key public process that the commission has to do is approve the standards, criteria, and policy directives. That is, is effectively the job description for the city manager, and I have a draft. I'll be sending that out to the commission for comment, for, for edits, whatever. That comes back and it gets presented at, at a commission meeting, whether it be the next one or whatever, and I know we had talked possibly of doing it at a work session, but of course, that, that couldn't be approved at the, at the work session. It was just, we could discuss it at the work session. And then the process, whether we do, how we do the recruitment, whether we use a search firm, whether we, the last one I did myself, I could do that, although I don't recommend it. It was, it took a fair amount of my time, and, and that was pretty much all I could do for about two or three months. We open the recruitment. When we open our recruitment, we, we use an online recruiting system that's national, so regardless of where we wanna look, once it's on, on the web, anybody, anybody can see it from Hawaii to the East Coast. So it's, it's a national website, NeoGov, and so anybody can apply. All applications are, are online. And then we're, the, the thing that has to also be discussed is, is what process the commission wants to use in, in the selection process. The last time, we had citizen, citizen input, we had stakeholder, key stakeholder input, we had staff input, and then, of course, the commission interviews were, were the final thing, and those, those are, took place in a public meeting. I guess I'm, I'm open to questions, but I wasn't really ready to, to talk about too much, but that's, that's effectively the process. Last time, I opened the recruitment in, on December first of two thousand and nine, and we filled the position, I think it was on April seventh of two thousand and ten. So, yeah.
Are you looking for suggestions at this point, or?
Well, that's, that's up to the commission to decide. We can, we can talk about it now, or I guess we can talk about it at a work session, or however, however you'd like to proceed.
So, the charter says we have to declare our intent, but doesn't, this is, there's no real timeline as far as having to have somebody on board, right?
Yeah, there's no consequence that, that is spelled out in the charter for, you know, not having somebody on board within four months.
Okay.
So if we had an offer made to someone, but they couldn't necessarily join us until a little later, that would still meet the intent?
You know, you're, you, the commission is the ultimate arbiter of what the commission, what the charter says, but yeah, to appoint somebody to take office in six weeks, you know, it sure seems like you've made the appointment within four months.
So... Never mind.
I'd be leaning toward providing as much direction to staff today as, if possible, and then perhaps meeting to refine whatever additional questions they might have for us at our next meeting, so that we're moving along expeditiously, and I'm prepared to provide my comments if that's helpful.
Are we, do we need a work session, or would it just be the general meeting or stuff? I'm thinking work session maybe, that we know, kind of what we're all individually thinking, and?
Mr. Kabizman? I, I think a work session would make some sense. Public session, well, as part of the standards, criteria, and procedures, you do have to have, provide the public with an opportunity to provide input on those, so that's, that's the only thing I would say, and it may make sense to have a work session ahead of time and then have the public input, you know, but that's.
So I've already put this on the agenda for the November work session, so I don't see why it can't wait until then. I don't know that we're in, you know, in any rush to get anything done at this point.
But that's three weeks from now, isn't it?
Right, but we're, but we're moving towards the thing, and once again, the, I'm a little confused why that's in the charter in the first place, but, you know, apparently somebody back in John McLaughlin State thought that would be a good idea, not anticipating, you know, websites and national searches for city managers. So I, you know, I, it's really up to the five of us how long it takes. I'd be way more concerned about who we get than how long it takes.
I, I agree, but with moving into the holidays, I think we wanna think about our timeline and providing that public input part, moving into the holidays, making sure that we're not pushing it till after January because of the holidays. So I don't know if we could look at having a work session before that, three weeks from now, so that we have time to have the public input session before we head into the holidays?
Could we, could we add a work session to our next meeting, which I believe is November fourth?
Uh, the work sessions, oh, yeah.
Yeah, before it.
We currently have a interview before your next city commission meeting. We potentially have an urban renewal item for Urban Renewal Commission. We also have an executive session, and?
So other than that, no?
Yeah.
And then a meeting.
So I spoke to one of the largest national firms today, just to get an idea about, you know, what it would take, what the timeframe is, what the general cost would be. So the cost typically is a fixed fee of thirty thousand dollars, and then plus whatever travel expenses, other kinds of, of things might come up over the top of that. The one thing he did mention is, is that it's harder to find quality candidates during this particular timeframe, 'cause he says you're gonna lose two weeks in November, you're gonna lose two weeks in December, and then, you know, running up against these other deadlines, so I don't know. I think, you know, we have a work session when we can, whether it's sometime between now and the next scheduled work session, if we need to have a special work session for that, if the commission's, you know, agreeable to do that, let's do that, but then, you know, 'cause what we really need to do is decide what we're gonna do and how we're gonna go about it. And I'm not comfortable having that, giving any kind of direction tonight about that.
No. So I would say, let's shoot for a work session sometime that first week in November.
How about the last week in October? Is that a better?
No.
Not for me.
Somebody's still honeymooning, I don't know.
Someone's on a honeymoon.
Yeah.
Okay. Well?
Would the core deliverable be, the result of our work session be a job description or a criteria of what we would be looking for?
That would be part of it.
And the process?
And the process.
Part of it would be the process, but you're still gonna have to then have a public hearing or, or some way for the citizens to comment about what those quote?
Standards, criteria, and policy directives.
Could we do that at the same, I mean, if it's a work session, it's a public meeting, people could come and listen and comment at the same time?
No reason you couldn't have public?
Well, if that's the, if that, if.
We, we could have it at the work session?
Doesn't it have to be approved by, you know, it, it, it has to be approved by the commission, so it has to be voted on in a public meeting, so that would have to be a commission meeting.
So, the, a work session is a commission meeting. It's, it's a part of your, I believe, bylaws, but it, or at least some, you have decided by choice that you're not gonna take final action at a work session. Nothing prevents you from revisiting that, and?
Oh, I don't wanna revisit that.
You could just call it a special meeting, though. You could have us hold a special.
Work session followed by a special meeting afterwards.
But I think at the work session, you're gonna provide us some direction, and we're gonna have to go package that, put it together.
Right.
You're gonna need some time.
And bring you back something clean that you can consider and make any edits based on the public testimony that you hear. So I guess what I'm hearing is, you know, process, standards, criteria, potentially comps from around the region, in a work session, and it sounds like preferably the first week of November.
So if we were to have a work session on Monday or Tuesday, November second or third, and then have a decision or more clear direction from us based on what you present to us on November fourth, that's moving right along?
My concern would be that if we have a work session on the second or the third, you know, we usually put our packets out. I guess I'd prefer to bring it back to you on, on, on the eighteenth. That would allow us to put it in our regular agenda as we normally would.
The eighteenth of November?
Correct.
And that, at that point, we'd have a job description and a process, and, and if we all approve that, we'd be able to go out with a job announcement the next day. Close.
Close, yes.
Actually, I could cut and paste that and throw it up on the web immediately, but it depends if the commission decides they wanna use an outside recruiter or not, and then that, that coordination with, with that individual would be something that I would have to do, too, unless the commission decided to take that completely.
Understanding that you'd like a, a work session that week, would you allow us to go back, work with you on your calendars, and, and see if we can find, instead of trying to do it from the dice here with everybody scrambling?
Yes.
Make sure everyone's on the same page and a date that works for everybody that needs to be involved for that work session?
Thank you.
And we'll, we'll do that, if that's acceptable?
Does it violate public process law to do an email poll of the commission about various questions that you might like our input on?
Yes.
If you copy each other, I mean, it's, if, if you were to provide individual responses?
So if we were to get an email from Jim saying, would you like a external recruitment firm, would you like it to be a national search, would you like, you know, what is, what is the timeline of the process, and we each provide individual feedback to you, does, is that a problem?
No.
Would that be helpful?
Only a problem when I get five different responses back.
I, I think I'd prefer to do that with us face to face.
Yeah, I think we can find a meeting time, so probably get more accomplished, hopefully.
Okay, so.
But we also need to approve this.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Okay. I move to approve resolution number fifteen-thirty-two, declaring the city commission's intention of appointing another city manager within four months.
Second.
Is there any other further discussion? Color roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Does anybody need anything pulled from the consent agenda?
No.
No.
Don't wanna talk about the vector con thing?
Trying to figure out how to get to thirty thousand.
It's a riveting conversation.
So our streets would be cleaner, then?
Uh, this is for the sewer system.
Sewer, sewer pumper.
It sucks.
We'll check proof of the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Mengeberg. Color roll.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Communications, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. First, I'll call up Library Director Cole to provide an update.
Here we go.
On the library.
We love hearing this good news.
That's right.
That's great.
It's even better news this week.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I have a, I have a very important question for you.
Oh, boy.
How often, frequently, rarely, never, would you like updates from the library?
Every month.
Frequently.
Frequently.
Frequently, yes.
Frequently, what's frequent?
Uh, every meeting.
Every meeting.
It can be quick. Every meeting, every meeting, never?
Well, it's important because citizens ask us, so every meeting.
Yeah, I think it's important.
This is a big deal.
Okay, every meeting, brief, alright, so. This is someplace I wanted you to see because you can't see it on your own, 'cause it's inside. This is the inside of the back wall of the Carnegie. It's all propped up. This is where steel is gonna go on the inside, starting very soon, and it's, it's just really interesting to see this old brick. You won't be able to see it in the future either, because it will be, what will remain will be furred out and covered, but the steel is gonna start coming in, Brian, do you remember, like in a week or so?
I think it's Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, that sounds right. Okay, and that's what it looks like as of, well, as of the other day. So the slab is going on Friday. We are on time?
On time.
As far as I know, we're on budget. So that's what it looks like. They've done a lot of work to represent that right there. This is just a different look. The, the wall will have, it may already have it, backfill on the Jefferson side.
It doesn't have it yet.
Doesn't have it yet, okay. So that's coming. I thought it came in, but yeah, maybe they haven't done it.
So underneath that yellow plastic, is that concrete already, or?
Concrete goes on top.
Yeah, it's just gravel.
Grav, yeah.
That's the vapor barrier between gravel and the concrete.
Okay, exactly. And then this is just a panoramic view of the, basically the whole site, and since I now know how to do that, I just thought I'd do it. 'Cause it's hard to see everything at once.
I like it.
And there's our, on the far, my right, is the construction site manager, Dave Van Black, and he has been fantastic, so really, really happy with him. Any questions? That's it? Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please move.
Next, we'll have a update from Chief Band.
Doc? Bet you didn't think we were gonna talk about drones tonight.
Oh, no.
You don't have a PowerPoint?
No. No, I'm kinda bringing this up because I want people to know about it, and just in the interest of transparency, because in some communities, this is a, a very, some people get kinda freaked out about drones, and so I just, my intent's to kinda tell you about this, and if, if you want a full workup and us to come do a presentation, we'll do it, or more information, but I'm just kinda, kinda giving you a, a little idea of what's been going on and what we're in the process of developing. Every year, when we have a, are getting ready for budget, I send out and email to everybody and say, hey, any ideas that you have, send them my way, and, and we'll see if it's something we'll look at putting in the budget. Get some great ideas, get some less than great ideas, get some crazy ideas. Somebody sends something, hey, we should get a drone. Crazy idea. No, no thanks, I don't even wanna talk about it. A couple weeks later, I, I get from one of the captains, hey, you know what you said was a dumb idea? The guy who had suggested that we go get a drone, he hears no, he goes home, he's got his own little model drone at his house, makes a quasi, a fake crime scene in his backyard, and then takes some photos and video and says, have you ever thought of looking at a crime scene this way? And so I go, okay, that's not a dumb idea, that's actually a good idea. There could be some real application. This led to some conversations about, we could've, we could've here, we could've there. Libkey was the first thing that came up.
Right.
We could have had a drone up in ten or fifteen minutes, and where we found that guy, Portland luckily had a plane up in the air, and we saw his feet in, in a doorway. We could have had it with a drone in ten, fifteen minutes. The, one of the DV homicide-suicide things that we had up by the school, by Gaffney, I won't go into details, but a lot of time went by while we were trying to determine how safe the scene was, and that would've been a super example of where we could've used a drone. we could've used a drone. Started thinking about other applications, uh, the, um, Public Works applications, the, um, you remember the, uh, the bridge that, uh, washed off the, uh, above, between us and Gladstone? Um, that could've gone, we could've taken that drone up, and engineers could've looked at all kinds of pictures about where that was failing. So, we started really looking into this, um, and in a nutshell, we bought a drone in the last budget. You can spend a heck of a lot more money on a drone than you would think, um, but we got a pretty good price point at about eight, $8,000 is what I think we spent on this drone. So, we're developing a policy, um, we've got some people, and, and it's not, you don't, uh, it, it's a pretty structured process, there's two laws that Oregon has passed that kind of, that tell, uh, public agencies how you're going to, to operate a, a, a system like this. Uh, FAA is involved, our drone is licensed with FAA, and our operators are licensed with the FAA. And then, some of the things that we're in the process of, uh, putting into our policy are outlined in the laws that Oregon has put out, and there are things that have to do with when we can use them, uh, that you're not gonna use it without a warrant if you're looking at people or anything like that. Um, there's obviously where I think we would use this the most is in an emergent situation where life is on the line, and we need to use that to somehow do something to keep people from getting hurt. And then, uh, there's strict rules, basically about what you do with the images that you have. Anything that is not, uh, related to a criminal case gets disposed of inside of 30 days. Um, our plan is to do a couple of things, just in full transparency, uh, we're gonna have on our website our policy about, uh, the, uh, the drone, um, and I think what I, cause I want people to know, it's not gonna be any secret when we use it, and what I think is we'll probably have on our site, uh, every time we use that thing, we're gonna put something up there, so people, if they ever wanna know, uh, "Hey, I saw that thing up," even training, if somebody saw it up at some place, or what were they doing, they can look up and go, "Oh, they were training on it, is all they were doing." Um, and we're gonna, um, i- it's gonna be a very above board, very transparent, um, but in the, in the age of technology, um, if something's a good idea, I'm not, I don't think we should get spooked off by, uh, the way that some other people are, cause I, we've overthought this thing, and we will continue to, and there's gonna be full transparency. Last thing I'll say is I think we're gonna call it the Red Baron, cause that's what Snoopy flew.
So, ha- have you written your policy yet?
We have a start form.
We have, we have a draft, there's a, uh, we have a draft. Cause I think the commission would like to see that before it's finalized.
Okay.
So that we have an opportunity to comment on that.
Yes.
Um, you know, typically, we try not to get involved in your business, but this is one of those things that kinda crosses the line between, you know, police and civilian world and all of that sort of thing, so I think us having a little bit of, you know, participation in the process would help.
That's why I'm bringing that up.
Yeah, right. The concerns about evasion, invasion of privacy would be paramount, I think.
Yeah. But at the end of the day, if it's invasion of privacy and stopping either a cop or a civilian from getting killed, I'm going for the stop and the killing part.
And so, part of that would be who has access to the footage and...
Right.
For how long and, and for what purpose?
Right.
Commissioners, one thing that Jim spoke about, we've worked with them in this project, is, um, using it for structural assessments for non-emergency and emergency uses as well. Um, so, I'm assuming that's something we'll have in the policy, but just to give you an example of some of the savings that we could get from this, we have a project that we talked to your team about earlier today, Jim, I haven't got a chance to talk to you about this, for the Boynton Reservoir, it's our 120-foot standpipe, which we're making some structural improvements.
Been on top of it.
Yeah, literally.
Have.
And, um, I don't like people going on top of it, because it's, it needs fall protection improvements.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're gonna be using the drone to take video footage to give to our civil engineers to help with our evaluation, so we don't have to put people on there. The cost of getting a third party to do that for us was $800, so, we're saving one-tenth of the cost by, we can make a training mission out of it, and then, um, use the drone that we have on hand.
That's good, so it can be used by two departments.
We, we actually have a staff member in Public Works who's gone through the same training, side by side with Jim's team, um, just in preparation that we ever have to use it for, um, post-disaster evaluations.
Oh, okay.
So, they participate in the cost?
Everybody.
That's a great question.
Do you really wanna hit us with more money?
We're gonna rent it out at $800 an hour.
Okay, anybody else?
Uh, yeah, just a couple, couple of updates from me. Um, uh, new schedule's coming for Amtrak Cascades Passenger Rail, uh, What's Changing, beginning on October 24th. The earliest weekend, northbound train out of Eugene will depart at 9:00 AM, arriving in Portland 11:35 AM, and continuing on to arrive in Seattle at 3:50 PM. On weekends and holidays, a throughway bus will depart Eugene Depot at 5:30 AM to connect to the northbound train departing Portland at 8:20 AM. There'll be no change to the afternoon northbound train between Eugene and Portland on weekends, holidays, and the weekday northbound train schedule will remain the same, um, for those who use the Amtrak Passenger Rail, um, additional information is available on Amtrak's website under the Cascade Passenger Rail Line. Uh, providing an update, uh, there'll be a road closure occurring, uh, this will occur at 7th Street between Main and Railroad Avenue on Saturday, October, October 24th, from 7:30 in the morning to 5:30. This is due to a business closest, uh, 702 Main Street needing new fire line service, which require a trench to be cut across the road. Uh, there'll be less implications for all parties working on the road, to include ODOT, if this commenced over the weekend. Additionally, the road will continue with closures again on Monday, October 26th, from 9:30 AM to 12, to handle the removal of the steel plates, um, uh, associated with that project. Um, just wanted to let you know that, uh, this year's City of Oregon Cities United Way campaign is underway currently, um, and this year's giving campaign starts today and ends on Friday, November 6th, uh, so we continue to work with United Way as we have, um, every year. Um, hope I don't steal anybody's thunder, Downtown Oregon City event, we have the Trick or Tree on Main Street, uh, on Friday, October 30th, from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Uh, pumpkin decorating contest for kids hosted by the Caulfield House on Saturday, October 31st, uh, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and then the Brews and Broomsticks Pub Crawl, uh, in Downtown Oregon City, um, on Fri- on Saturday, October 31st, from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM. And then, just last, I'd like to, uh, present the city commission and the mayor, um, that we received the Oregon chapter of the American Planning Association's special recognition for a project with state significance for the Wamit Falls Legacy Project, um, when they had their conference, uh, last week. So, exciting to receive that award for the work that's, uh, been going on and will continue to go on, um, the Old Blue Heron Site. Uh, that concludes, uh, my presentations for tonight.
Mr. Shaw?
I was just gonna congratulate Tony on that, cause I think he's probably the major force on getting that award there, so, congratulations to him.
Thank you, sir, and I would certainly be remiss to thank the hundreds of hours of staff from multiple agencies that made that possible.
Correct, correct.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, let's see, or went to the, uh, Regional Waste Water Meeting, which is always thrilling.
Sympholating.
May, Mayor Holliday will fill us in more on that, I hope. And, um, let's see, went to, uh, uh, what else here? Um, oh, the, um, OCBA, uh, meeting, board meeting, well, went to OCBA also, but then the next day, went to the CCBA County, um...
Clackamas County Business Science.
Clackamas County Business Science, and, uh, that was interesting also, uh, especially the chair, or not the chair, but, uh, Chair Ludlow was there, yeah. Anyway, um, then, uh, went to, let's see, the Tri-City Plant yesterday, did a little tour of the Tri-City Sewer Plant, and, um, and then went to the Oregon City Together Program, which is at the high school last night, too, just after that, so, um, they had a speaker there, a gentleman that'd been in a...
Yeah.
Car accident, and, uh, like Rocky was there, too, so, um...
No, he spoke, he spoke at the school earlier in the day.
Yeah, that's right, had 2,200 kids show up for that, uh, they said it was, you gotta drop a pin on that place because of that, so, um, I think that's, uh, the end of my list.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
I went to the M, Metro, M-PAC meeting.
Yeah.
And they did a, they, they're launching their regional transportation plan yet again, so there'll be many opportunities to weigh in with Oregon City's preferences around that. It'll be a two-year process, and they're just kicking that off this, uh, fall. And they also, um, launched a new, more user-friendly, uh, website that focuses on key issues, the one that they unveiled, this time was around housing, because affordable housing is an issue in the region, and it's a way to see, um, what the current situation is and what potential solutions are around the region, some best practices, so, they're really trying to, uh, take what normally Metro delivers as stacks of paper and getting it down to one-pagers and graphics and things that are easier for everyday folks to understand, so it's an impressive effort.
You got nothing, Mr. Smith, really? Even coming up on Halloween, there's nothing you wanna advertise or anything?
All right, just thought I'd give you a chance. Um, so, I did, uh, attend the Regional Waste Water Capacity Advisory Committee, whatever, um, the, uh, folks from River Health, CCSD-1 attempted to, uh, have a motion to combine the two advisory boards into one advisory board for the county. The members of the Tri-City, uh, folks, uh, rejected that out of hand, so, Oregon City, Westland, and Gladstone all voted no, so that didn't go anywhere. Um, in the meantime, uh, we have, I've been working with Representative Barton, um, to see if we couldn't get the state involved in some kind of a mediation process. Uh, Brent has been working with county staff, and, uh, earlier this week, the county made a decision to ask for help from Oregon Consensus in the governance discussion between Oregon, uh, between Tri-Cities and CCSD-1. So, we look forward to having that mediation process done out of the governor's office versus, you know, some other private place. So, that's part of what we're doing. Um, the other part is, we're actively looking for positive solutions to the wastewater capacity, at least for the Tri-City Plant. So, myself and John Lewis, along with, uh, Steve Johnson and, um, Ross Schultz, their interim city manager, went to a place called Seadrill Woolly, Washington, last Thursday and Friday. Now, Seadrill Woolly's about, uh, an hour northeast of Seattle, so, I had the ultimate pleasure of being in a car with John Lewis for five hours on the way up, and for almost seven and a half hours on the way back.
Ooh, traffic.
So, just like basically a typical Public Works staff report.
Without the power of...
Wow. He's defenseless.
Uh, no, so we had a good time, we got to...
I don't let myself get drawn into these things.
Yep.
That sounds quick.
So, yeah, uh, we would have to look at a thing called, it's, it's called an Omni-processor. Basically, it's a small footprint, um, sewage treatment plant that uses a sand bed fire device to, uh, obliterate the sewage at, at the same time that it's actually using that as fuel. By the time it's all done, it's like very close to zero emission, it leaves a little bit of ash behind, and it can produce pure distilled drinking water out of that same sludge. And if you go on YouTube and, and, and Google the Omni-processor, there is actually, uh, a video of Bill Gates, because the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation are the ones that, that are financing the, the R&amp;D on this, um, there's a video of Bill Gates actually going to the end of this process and opening the pipe and taking a glass of water and drinking it, to just to prove that it's totally distilled water. So, we got a chance to see that, we're really excited about that, and we're gonna have, uh, Mr. Peter Janiky, the CEO of the company, actually gave us the tour, and he's gonna be coming down, um, in the next few weeks to meet with the, the three cities and, and the Clackamas County folks to see if we can't find a way to avoid a $55 million, 1950's technology versus something that's substantially less and, and, you know, does a better job. So, that's some of the things that we've been doing, um, let's see, there was one other thing on my list, I thought.
See, it's great to get the cities involved and get more minds at the table.
Mayor, when you say mediation, do you mean, um, an external party helping to find common ground, but not something that is binding necessarily?
Well, you know, there are, there are two offices inside the governor's office, there's the Regional Solutions Office, which is run by Bobby Lee, and then there's Oregon Consensus, which is a, another, uh, division of that office, which goes around and does these kind of mediation events when there are large and complex government agencies that are involved. So, you know, they might get involved in, I mean, you know, this is a, almost a classy example of what Oregon Consensus does. So, they would be, yeah, the mediator, and, you know, we either get to a spot, hopefully, we all sit down and talk enough that we get to a spot where we can agree to do something. That's would be our goal. I just personally feel like that the best way would be for CCSD-1 and Tri-Cities to have their own boards, however those are made up, I don't know, but, we should be in a place where CCSD-1 and Tri-Cities can negotiate in good faith with each other to come to a decision that's best for, uh, for the two parties themselves. But, the board of CCSD-1 has to be representing CCSD-1, and the board of Tri-Cities has to be representing Tri-Cities, that's the only way you can bargain in good faith. And right now, when the boards are all the same people, you know, you're talking to yourself, and somebody's gonna lose in that deal. Um, that's it for me, I think. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Anything I missed?
No.
Okay.